And you can include it, like when I bought my house, it was included.
So maybe we just have the mayor talk with the attorney and bring up this idea of the lien and then face the typos and look at it again next month? Is that something we want to do or is it more than a loan? Maybe this idea that you're bringing up of abandonment?
I think we sure may ought to put that in there if that's what we're brushing up against as an advantage.
Yeah, somehow get abandonment in there as well.
Because I know if it's abandonment and your new hookup fee is $10,000, or maybe you could just pay this 900 and continue the service.
Pay the back melon.
The other fees, you can do the new one or you can do this other fee that was just like you never lost it if you catch. The lesser of two evils.
You have this option.
I mean, the town is selling water, that's what we're doing. We put the money in, we're selling water. We're all paying back the loan we took. So the more customer we get, the better off we are. Now, the guy has to go out and get them all. Maybe not the ideal situation.
No, I agree with it. The more customers, the better. In fact, that's an idea that's going to come up later on in this meeting when we discuss Daniel Water. Let's continue with this.
Does anybody want to run with how to get this bill into a property tax? Does anybody want to take that, pick up that ball and run with it on this board?
Yeah, help me out. What do you want me to do?
I want you to figure out how we get a bill from the personal, like the garbage, flip that over to a, something that we can attach it to county on the property taxes. If that's an avenue that the town could use that's maybe cheaper, more effective.
Let's talk after meeting so I make sure I'm clear with you.
You know, very, even on that concept, you're still charging the new owner.
No, because when you go to closing, they split the property tax.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
They split the pro, at least they did online.
Pro rate.
Yeah. And so that they attach it to the property tax. Same thing when we're spraying weeds. If we go and spray somebody's weeds, it's not doing, they're not compliant, that gets attached to the property tax. Now, it can't be very easy to do because the county's elected to take them off of green bill. So if you have a field of Yunnan Spring, you're in jeopardy of losing your green bill. And so that's how, that's how the county's doing with the noxious weed.
How about somebody that's under six acres that would care?
Yeah, yeah, that wouldn't have much to eat.
That wouldn't have much. Get built for it.
But if somebody has a property, that definitely is, Quentin, when he told me they were doing that, I was like, wow, that's. And I have a few properties he should look at.
Well, even six acres.
Yeah, and you can buy a lot of spray for the taxes you're not paying.
So you want me to look at how we can get the water bill put on a property tax?
Yeah, what's the process for moving that one, the liquid water bill? Or even any water bill, really. Any water bill, changing that from a personal, personal debt to be able to attach that to the property taxes. It has to be an avenue to.
Because a lien won't work.
Because a lien won't work.
According to new law.
Yeah.
We cannot lien the problem.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
So we're trying to find another means of. Going on record or collecting.
Because if we have that app, then we'll know how to get it onto the property tax and that will be paid.
Okay.
Five years or I guess we have a responsibility to do that.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
Awesome. Okay, so is that a motion to continue?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to continue. Is there a second?
Yes, I second that motion.
Okay, got a second. Any discussion on it? Do you want to discuss it some more? Okay, see, done. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that will continue and throw on the next agenda. The mayor's gonna say, what'd you do? Just continue everything? Yep. Okay, Daniel Water. Okay.
Sorry, I just want to mention that when you add on to the extending of the 10,000 for the impact fee, don't forget the water share. I was thinking, I'm like, that has to be added on too.
Right.
Because that one, everyone keeps complaining about, tell me, they don't know about it.
Okay, so you add on 10,000 and you give one share?
Yep.
Well, it depends on the share.
Depends.
That has an acre fee by itself.
I said one acre.
There you go. Okay, so we are on Daniel Water, municipal water. And we solved all your issues?
I think so. I don't really have any Daniel Water issues, but I do have someone that's interested in connecting to the system. And I was hoping Ryan Taylor would be here tonight, but Kimberly might know some of this too. We have got a person that wants to extend a water line and.
This a NEF resident?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have impact fees. And really, I would think that if we could extend this water line and participate with some of those costs, that that would benefit the town in the long run. So I have talked to the contractor on this job and he's saying, you know, if this total project is, let's just say 65,000, and I can dig a well on this 30,000, I think I'm gonna dig the well. And I personally, I think in the town's interest, it wouldn't be a bad idea to say, listen, let us cover half of those costs, get it where it makes more sense for you to hook on to the culinary system. And they have expressed to me, that's what they'd rather do than do a well. So how do we get there, counsel?
Much easier to work, call somebody else if your water stops and go check your well. It's much easier to call somebody else.
So is there only one hookup on the end of this line? For now.
Is there potential for a longer one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, for several?
Yes.
Fire flow, would it improve that? Fire protection?
Yeah, what?
So the property of interest that they are right now, so it stopped on Rex's property and hence is the next house down that, where it stopped. He has about 600 feet of line to install to get there. So that 600 feet, he was calculating like $50 a foot and that's how he came up with, well, it's cheaper for me just to drill a well than to go along Big Hollow Road there. For the.
Well, is he right? Southfield?
Yep, Southfield Road.
Okay.
So we're talking about Southfield Road going down.
You said Big Hollow?
Oh, sorry.
We're down Southfield Road probably 50 to 60 feet because there's a height.
Even further than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
So we have kind of anticipated growth there when we went back seven years ago.
But if we have to pay 30 grand to extend this to five homes that are paying 35 bucks a month, it's gonna be a long time before we get that 30 grand back.
I am 10,000.
Hook up your extension fee.
Oh, would each one, okay. That makes a lot of sense.
It might be a couple of years before you get those, but at some point you're gonna be able to get all the money.
Potential on the end of there is that, gotta be at least a 40 acre parcel to become the next build, the Sullivan's build.
Do the Sullivan's have that big a piece?
Yeah, it's a big piece there. And David ready to, Damon did the perk test on that, but there were some discrepancies on the right of way there and they backed away from it after that.
What's the realistic price per foot in today's market, Kimberly?
For an eight inch water line to extend that? We were able to do ranch field drive for about $32 a foot.
And see, they've figured they've been looking, somebody put a number out of 50 that protected.
Well, the reason why is because it's only a couple hundred feet and for Southfield Road, that was like two miles, so they had a lot, they had a lot larger mobilization fee, but it was a smaller percentage of the project. So that mobilization fee was like two or three percent of the project, it was like $10,000. To have that same $10,000 fee to get everyone out there for the move fee was what, I can see it increasing that much to about like $40 a foot. But it's just because it's so small, everything else gets ramped up.
Right.
Well, I like to see a budget that's got a lot of media in there because money's left over to play.
At what time of the year?
So, you know, if it gets done for $45 a foot, both parties are happy.
Yeah, that's probably what the guy quoted him for, coming under budget.
Can I throw a comment into this whole scenario? Why do we want to make it easier for the next person coming along to develop more?
Well, there are two sides to that.
Well, it's in our plan.
It's going to happen anyway to a degree, but can you pass the costs on to the next developer somewhere?
I mean, if the guy just wants to put a well in there, let's just let him put his well in. And if the person passed him, wants to develop, they can pay the cost to go clear and pass it to the other person. They already did that all the way down 3,000 south and a lot of places around Daniels historically.
If we can get more people helping to pay on that note for certain years.
Aren't we trying to preserve the growth in Daniels?
Well, we do because you're limited to five acres.
The 40 acre piece, yeah, you should be able to split that.
But our fee right now, 35 bucks a month will still pay off our loan.
Sorry to get paid for it, I know.
Yeah.
But if you kick 10,000 towards it, it helps.
Yeah, you'll pay it off quicker.
Yeah, but to have the population held low and pay 30 bucks a month.
Yeah, I don't.
To me, that's not, that's not worth.
Well, and on the other hand, they drill a well, it's not slowing them down.
That's true.
They just drill a well and go.
That's true.
Maybe you like the fire flow.
Yeah, and that, we've had people say that. I'm not on the water system, I don't get nothing. Well, that fire hydrant right there, part of your house. Yeah, so, so they're not headed down the creek like the old days, pumping it up, so it is a huge thing, fire. And that's how we're able to use some of the impact fees on that because the entire town benefits from those. And, well, the entire county, because guess where the county goes to fill up their fire trucks?
Yeah.
We're user friendly, so. Anyway. Well, and here's another part to that. We have a hookup on that line that's already in the works, it's already been, being paid for. That would hook onto that same line. So we do have one already that is in the process.
There you collected. If you got two hookups, you're almost there.
So who's getting that hookup?
I'm tipping.
Is that already been paid for?
Yeah. No, it's being paid for. I don't think it's been paid for. It's, he got set up on payments.
Through the private water company?
So is that to Nelda's home or is that?
No, Nelda has another hookup. They bought two hookups.
Okay, so this is down the road?
This is down across, yeah, across from Greenery there.
Okay.
So, and he is called within the last month asking us how long the process is to get his plans approved, so I assume he's, his house is sold now, so.
Yeah.
So he's moving in that direction. So we'll be obligated to go halfway anyway because we've already sold the hookup. So that might play into this equation also.
Absolutely.
So would the council give me authority or give the engineer authority to say that we would hook up half that cost?
You know.
Where's your funding coming from? Do you have it?
The problem that arises is, and this is why the school had us do it, they hired us to run the water line. Because our funds are tied up from a taxpayer. We can't, we won't be throwing our taxpayer money to a private without them working for the town. So if they've done that, we probably have to go through the process and get the bids and do it from the town and build them the same as we did on Ranch Drive. Because we are held to a higher standard with taxpayer money of what our requirements are when you throw around money that much. So it'd probably be a different course that we would have to take.
They're wanting to jump the bit to get a permit, right? The quickest way for them to get a permit is to do the well.
That is the quickest. The thing is, is that this whole thing with Southfield Road is part of our plan for the infrastructure and everything else.
It is in our plan.
So wouldn't it be something to the effect of.
Someone I'd deal with.
Okay, to at least listen to the proposal, get a proposal.
Well, I'm just curious, are they, how much are they willing to kick in with the well will cost? And that's for the water line and the hookup or that's everything?
No, they, they're willing to pay the hookup fee separate.
Separate from that?
Yeah.
So we could pull that 10,000 into.
Yeah.
Into that project too, so.
Into the potential area.
We got one that's hanging on.
Between kicking that, you're just about there.
But. But what's wrong with letting them pursue the well so they can get the permit? And then along the course of construction, they decide not to drill a well and they hook to the town water?
That's deceitful.
No, 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 that's not deceitful.
That's bait and switch. Been going on for a lot of years.
That is not deceitful. That, that does get them their permit.
If we give them a will serve letter, they get their permit anyway. That permit is held up on a will serve letter. Either have to show a well permit or they have to show a will serve from the town.
Which one can they get the quickest?
Don't know.
I don't know. I've already drafted the will serve letter, gave over to Ryan to get him in the mayor's signature. That was one of the first things I did, so.
Sure.
So I guess what we're gonna have to do is get a engineer's estimate. We'll have to, we'll have to get TDA to give us an engineer estimate.
Yeah.
And see where we're at. The council can certainly do that, initiate that here and get an engineer's estimate. Get locked down what we have as far as what they're gonna kick in towards us. And see where, see the difference, what we're looking at.
Okay, let's let Kimberly handle that too.
Work with the owner. Okay, are you okay with that?
I'm fine. I'm just right now doing notes. What you'll probably see from us is a cost of, this is how much it'll cost for us to go out and get those three bids and this is what we're planning, this is what we're thinking about planning, just a preliminary of bringing line 700, 800 feet, whatever that distance is.
Okay, now, are we going to the far side of the property?
That's what I need to go back with Ryan on. What exactly would satisfy, do we only go to 600 to this corner or do we go like 700? So I need to go and make sure that we service him or if we keep going and what the cost would be.
How many fire hydrants on it? Yeah, there'd probably be at least two.
At least two.
At least two fire hydrants to 5,000 a piece. So.
There's one, I'll be answering 10,000.
There's one on the answer, I know that, but then you said they extended farther out that I didn't know, so it's a question of can I hook up there? Is that extra 20 feet, 100 feet? So I need to get those measurements.
Yeah.
So my goal is to get you an engineering estimate and as a quick overview, if this is what we have for a plan, can we go forward in getting some contractor bids for this type of project?
Right.
So that would be my goal for next week is to come up with this, that estimate that I have. Is it worth it to go forward and to move on to the process?
Don't get the bid, just bring us the engineer's estimate.
Yep.
Is that what you want?
Yep, that's perfect.
Okay. All right. Best we better do that in the motion. We're gonna spend some money. All in favor?
Aye.
Wish you'd do it. You make less. Yeah, you know, huh? She's gonna get an engineer estimate and bring it back to the council.
For next month, right? Yep.
We might be able to do something before that if we get that back sooner. If we're, if we're gonna look, the mayor may call and just get, move something forward if we get that back, which is. Get us an engineer's estimate. And then we'll, because I'm sure, like you said, they're probably, well, they're in, they're in final final approval stages of their plans right now.
Yeah, it's quicker than.
One of the last items was they were at planning commission and they got told to come back later after they revised their site plan, so they have at least until the next planning commission.
All right.
We need to have some elevation to this stuff.
The next planning is two weeks.
Yeah. So I don't know how fast you can do the engineer estimate.
I just need to work with Ryan to make sure I have everything accounted for.
Yeah, because they'll have all the specs, six foot cover and all that.
I already have all that from Ranch Drive and a couple of those projects that we've done.
All right. Sounds good.
Can I put a suggestion in? It seemed like in one of them additions of the water line that they kind of, on the engineer's estimate or something, didn't factor in that when you dig through cobble rock that the trench opens up immensely as you go up and they figured to only have to replace the width of trench of asphalt and then had to come in at a extra.
That's where the engineer's estimate, the estimate and contractor estimates.
All that and Daniels ended up paying for all that extra.
Often a contractor will be over the engineer's estimate. I can get lots of jobs and you end up being, they're not, you know, that's how the contractor sees it, he's the only one that has to. Correct. He has to make it work, so.
And Ryan has told me, is an engineer estimate, it will never.
That's a guideline.
Will never be right.
It's a guideline.
Will never be right on.
And everybody sees it different and everybody will be different.
Right.
But we do have some impact fees and some other fees that we're able to attach to this based on fire protection along in the same area, so there is some avenues that we have for some additional funding on that line. Yeah, the engineer's estimate likely, like I said, a lot of times, it's here and then you'll have bids all over. Yeah, and we've had, we've had the engineer estimate here and then the bids are put out here and it's like, we should have paid a better job. You know, depending on how everybody sees it that day. Yeah, if everybody's busy, then it's different, so. Okay, but that's, that's our best avenue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sort of, and then we'll put it out for bids. It'll take a little while to build that house. It's huge.
Year and a half to contract yourself.
Year and a half.
That's what I said.
10,000 square feet.
Not much.
It's over 10,000 square feet, so it's required to have sprinklers anyway.
That's not much of a lot of work.
Well, there you go.
They can afford the.
You can incur some cost on a well for fire sprinkler.
They require to have fire sprinklers by cover. If you're over 10,000 feet.
I know, but he has additional requirements to feed on a well for that fire sprinkler.
He's got another tank.
He's got another tank, sister. So that will drive that cost up besides just the wells.
Yeah.
All right. How about Storm Haven Water? Are we done with Daniel?
I have one more set of news for the town of Daniel. With the, I went and collected water samples this last time, they came back clean, but besides that, I went to the state to ask about, we are required to do radiologicals, testing for radiation and uranium and things like that. I got approval from them to sample ones every three years, and one I already did counted, so right now our next time to sample for radiologicals is in 2022. So for the next six, six years, I saved the town over $9,000 worth of sampling costs, of laboratory costs of my time to go out and sample, so probably over $10,000 over the next six years.
Good job.
Hey, I'm happy.
That's why we keep you ready. So they did weigh that because they just, they installed that on us on, they just kicked that up because of some prior transcription.
Yeah, but now it's set up every quarter, so once every three years.
Awesome. Good job.
Worth to send her back in.
She's not getting out, she's still in.
Well, I've never been chased up for taking a water sample either, which apparently is interesting too. I had no idea you guys got chased away.
I'm totally approached, I can't give a shit.
I'll cut you some slack.
I guess, or maybe I'm just persistent. Maybe that's what it is.
And then before we leave Daniel, Kimberly, if you'd remind Ryan to talk to Brandon Clough at the county.
Okay.
About getting going on that vault project.
Oh, it is. It's a transportation project so that we can get them actually metered. I remind him every single week, every Friday at 10:00.
The reason why I'm thinking that is the county shouldn't be any slower than I now and it might be a good time in the next month or two today.
So is this the second meter or the original meter?
The original meter is getting replaced and then there's a new vault going in that meters the fire hydrant.
Prior to the fire hydrant?
Prior to.
And so they'll be able to hook in and run back to the other building and that'll all go through that same line?
No, we're gonna go down on the existing and put in a new meter.
An eight inch meter?
No, that's, that's a.
Inch, six inch line?
Two inch.
On the fire hydrant?
No, no, but the meter that reads the building.
Right, the original meter.
We're gonna replace that. And then on the fire hydrant, we need to meter that that they're filling the trucks up with.
Okay, and that hydrant, they're gonna hook in another line and run it back to the salt shed. And the line is already in, but it's not hooked in yet.
No, okay.
So there's a blue line, if you look on the left-hand side as you pull in there, it's dubbed up. That line is being hooked in.
That's all right.
Brandon was.
That's all right.
We tried to find the old line, it was over there with our locator. And it's been chowed, so.
But the county gets so busy in the summertime and I can't think of anyone to do that job. Let the county do it, I didn't put it out for beds.
Yeah. Do you think that's an inch and a half line?
No, it's bigger than that. I haven't done that hold for two years, it's bigger than that. You're talking about the existing meter?
Yeah. I think it's a six inch line.
Maybe they'll reduce it up to a meter.
Could have. Or they could have turned it and metering what's going in the building and the six inch continues in the back to the shop.
We'll know when we do that.
You will. It'll be interesting to see.
And that's something else, what does the county want to charge, or excuse me, what does the town want to charge the county for that water community? Your water trucks and your washout and all of that. Are you gonna give them that same rate where all of a sudden you're paying $5,000?
I don't know, rich, well, they already allow double.
You want to recover your cost, don't you?
Yeah.
And they, an estimate for mine has been around 350 to 500 gallons of water. Is that right?
What, and would be you? A million dollars a, uh, sorry, a million gallons a year.
Doesn't sound like the, yeah.
A lot of water.
Yeah. No, we've been bringing like a million gallons a year for the water use. So it's like 100 gallons.
He retracted the numbers.
Maybe today.
He retracted. Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I think you're right. I think a defrost will be coming out of the ground if it's not already, so. They're purchasing the meter, right?
Yes.
I know we've been back and forth with Kim.
They, they paid for the engineering, they purchased the meter, they did the work.
Okay. Okay, there were some restraint issues on that pipe as well, it equals six inch. They didn't have it back filled when they charged it and the line started down. Got some good pressure on that end. Got some good pressure on that end. Alright, how about Storm Haven?
No water issues on the water out. Other than we're just, you know, we're on moratorium, we're watching it. But let's talk about the sewer. We've got 19 or 20 users on the whole sewer system. When you go through the warrants tonight, you're gonna find some money there that was paid. And I, I think you could be looking at that kind of a number about every four to six months. But it's still, it's still the, the best way to get by for right now.
Have the rotor reed again? Did we pump the tanks, then?
Yes.
We did.
We did. Can we find out that you've gotta remove 5,000 gallons to get to the sludge? They're big tanks.
They are big, huh?
So if you're gonna do any good, you need to, you need to pump them. You need to pump each tank three times if you're gonna do any good.
Truck three times, huh? Woo-hoo! That big of a tank.
It's, it's been 60 years that they've only been pulling the one.
Pumping the one?
One, pumping the one and then letting it go again, pumping the one and letting it go. But in order to get to the sludge, you need to do that.
Yeah.
And I don't have a sewer license.
It's okay. It's an illegal sewer. Can't do that one now, so we'll keep operating.
I'm thinking about that one, yeah.
Kim has hers.
I'm a water, I'm a sewer. Go ahead.
Septic system, it's pretty septic, guilty.
But you can get authorization.
We don't want authorization. We want to slowly eliminate that. Okay, item number 10, Mike Ashby, return of money for ham radio tower. So what this is entailing is Mike pulled a permit for three radio towers. And he didn't build them all. And so Epic billed us partial on that. He put $500 down and he used all but 172.75. So Epic billed us 327.25 when those were put in. So because of what that ham radio will do in the event of an emergency, I think he qualifies for a refund for funds that were not expended. This permit was issued in 4/24 of 12. So it's been a little while. And I know the town will rely on him should the unforeseeable happen. County law will end up looking at that.
I make the motion to return his money.
Sure. Have a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Can you clarify, is it just the unused money?
Yes.
What was the amount?
172.75. He didn't ask for this, where is it? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We can continue that. Okay, just shortly before we get off of water, we have the water secretary that's doing, doing some license, doing the business licenses, right, as a result. It's all kinda together right now for the water secretary. So what I'm looking for is, that's the last one. That's the one I just got. So this is Shindermeen and Kathy Jo. Okay, so that's the last one I got. Let me give you, this, this is the one prior to that. Give a moment, reverse, huh? Okay, and this is, just so you're all up to date, this is my response to the first one you read, the first. So that one is the bottom of this. So this is just my reply. And we're just looking for some direction. Can you go through that? Did you came through on your email? Alright, yep, you're at the top on CC. So as we move through with this new licensing, we're gonna have some different direction going. And so they have what you can see in between our thing, and then this is what I proposed. She, you see her proposal there, and then this is what I've put together for a proposal of how the direction of both the licenses. Clearly, it's up to you guys how this, how this will move forward. We had some issues with the numbering lining up with what the state's requiring us to turn into the county and forward it on to the state. And so I, I told her I agreed to her suggestions of the council. So I did. Getting this gloss through that. Give us some direction.
Move to approve.
Which one?
This one that you wrote.
Okay, have a motion? Is there a second? Need a minute? Okay, you'll just sit there till we get a second. It's just, I, as we look at that, it's just the smoothest way I can think of to do that is just, cuz, because now that we come straight to the council after planning. So we're gonna have some issues with monies being out, could possibly be out three months.
Well, what, not even to even get money?
Well, they have to turn in the money when they do their application. But it could be three months before the council sees it.
Okay.
If it goes to planning, there's some conditions put on that they don't like. They could, they have the avenue to go to the board of adjustments to get those. Of course, it comes as a recommendation, so that might go the other way. It may come here. If they're turned down, then they go back and look at those conditions.
I'll second that motion.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be new as we move through this. But it's as smooth as we can see, and I've talked to Mary and she's okay with this. I have given the mayor the same letter. You still okay with it?
I mean, the only thing I can see honestly is she's already gone through, like, she's already been handling the majority of it other than what the court's been handling. And so the only thing I can see is now she's also gone and then gone on training, training to issue certificates, whatnot. I mean, she's already trained, she's already been doing it.
She hasn't been issuing a certificate?
Well, no, but she's gone through training now. They, Floris has walked her through exactly what she needs to be doing. So I mean, she's, I'm just saying, she's already been handling the majority of it, doing renewals, doing all of that part of it. The only thing the court's been doing is money and then sending them to the county, from my understanding.
The report.
So in essence, in one way, I mean, it might be just as easy that she is doing it just because she's already been doing it, she's got the training now from Floris, but it's not either way.
Now you see so many people involved with it or getting spread out with it. And you'll, you'll be the one getting it ready for the council, so. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, will move that forward and then we'll, we'll have to tweak a little bit as we go through. If 8/25 gets adopted, just as the process goes. So you understand that the renewals won't go to planning? They'll come straight to here unless I have a complaint?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Just wanted to make sure everybody's on board with that. Okay, take this to item 11. Rewill the minutes. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Any corrections or additions?
There were some corrections that were already made as of Friday, about some titles and whatnot.
These are the correct, you got my corrections in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think this is the, well, actually, I believe I printed the corrected version versus what was actually initially filed out.
Okay. So there was just some grammar and I added, I added a word in there that was, what was it? I forget. I gave you my red copy. Anyway, I clarified the sentence.
Well, they resented it? Or is it something else?
Till I entertain a motion to approve, if you.
I make a motion to approve the February 5th minutes.
Have a motion? Is there a second? Have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Alright, recorder's office.
Okay. So we have the Comcast bill, which is our new form service for the office. DNA, half dozen, $200 is the print. Smith and Harvickson, the majority of that bill had to do with the Ranch Drive lawsuit. And then there was also one charge for something to do with the trailer park. Then you have all the GDA invoices. The Floris quarterly invoice has to do with our quarterly services. Walmart, I had to purchase speakers and whatnot, binders, staples, paper files and labels. And then another staples for the printer because our printer ended up going junk. And on top of that, I had to purchase ink to go with it, and then postage within the town use. Public Works, no removal, and then Eric's Blue Steak Hours, regular payroll hours, or payroll for the council. Daniel Municipal Water, 47.75, that's the data charge. Eber City Power, and then the Camp Tech Ford. So the two are the, for the 403 have to do with the.
It was radiologicals for December and January.
Yep.
This is two months?
Yep, correct.
Is that, will that be standard fee?
Um, it was, but that's the one that I saved the town doing quarterly. Basically, we have to do it every quarter. And then they requested, instead of doing it at the end of the quarter, to do it at the very beginning. So I was doing it at December and then they, um, for it, and I was gonna do it in March, but they requested me to do it in January. So that's why it's back to back.
So this is, the radium test is $201 each time?
Um, that's the $430.
Oh, each time?
Yep.
And that's the one that I got them to push back into 2022.
Okay.
That way we don't have to pay every quarter for it again.
Yeah, and it was an expensive test.
Yes.
Um, then we have the GDA invoice. The Daniel irrigation had to do with the Barrett's water transfer. Postage for Kathy Jo. And then the audit was the Gilbert and Stewart. And then again, the payrolls. Storm Haven, top domain energy and Eber Power. The GDA bill. And then the rotor reeder, those are the two charges just for the last month of what Kim was talking about, half of it clean us out. Camp Tech Ford, and then again, postage for Storm Haven and the payroll.
Move to approve. Have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, a motion, a second, discussion? Kim left. I asked him why it was 1350 and wants 330. That's quite a. Did we ever?
Do you want some clarification?
Well, I was just curious to thinking back what Casey had told us, if he had a guy that would come out and do it for $150 each time. Councilman Bateman thought it was, I can't remember who he said it was, it came out.
So the one for.
This is gonna be an ongoing thing. Maybe we should get on the schedule.
To have it done?
If it's half price.
So the 330 had to do with jetting sewer lines to clear out, apparently it was round 4751 location.
Okay.
And there was approximately 300 feet to clear a belly in the line.
Okay.
The one for the 1350, that one was actual pumping of 4,000-plus gallons out of the septic.
Pumping of the septic?
Yes.
Rotor reeder did that?
Correct.
Wow.
So the pumping on this bill shows it was $1100 and then the main line, it looks like they did do some main line. Was another 250 for the total of 1350.
Okay, does it have a gallon on it?
Um, for the total gallons, it just shows 4,000-plus gallons were cleared out.
Okay, if that makes sense, it's a 5,000-gallon tank.
Yeah, that's what he said, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 140 feet, so between the two, the pumping of the main line was 140 feet that was cleared.
I mean, he said it was 300 on 330.
Right, on the initial, on the very first bill for 1350, they broke it out showing $1100 for the pumping of the 4,000-plus gallons and then another 250 for the main line, which they cleared 140 feet out of the line.
Okay. I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, John had a question on the lawsuit. On Ranestreit.
So, blowers.
Yeah. So we looked at the damage, the attorney, this is the bill for the letters that he sent to them. We still, we don't have a new resolve yet, so it will be ongoing. So we met with the school district, the GDA's offices, and he said it wasn't us, so. Not our problem, took up to the contractor. Well, their agreement was with us, with the school district, so. Again, our attorney says we have good standing. We paid you good money, you tell us that.
So adding the whole 1,800, $81 was, had to do with the trailer park, the rest of it was all Ranch Drive.
So Chip had called, called in regarding some issue on the trailer park. Which we had done quite a bit of research on that. Yeah, Kimberly did quite a bit on it, pulled up all the old documentation on it. Okay, we don't need a closed session tonight? Item 14, item adjourned.
We've got a motion to adjourn to rights meeting.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned until April. Thank you all.
Thank you, Eric.
Isn't it April?
I know it.
Wow.
No, it's not. You've probably already been messing with calves.
Oh, yeah, we're in the middle of that.
Same.